Had a good turnout for that, and then we had a just a phenomenal turnout for the sidewalk chalk art festival down in Charles Johnson Center. I didn't know you could do all that with chalk. It still amazes me, but a lot of fantastic art that took place. We've got a whole slew of proclamations to do, so I guess I'd better get down there and do that. Kat Spivey, come forward please. For those of you who don't know, Kat is our geographical information specialist. All the neat maps that you see on our website and other places, you're responsible for all that art.
Me and a team, yes.
Me and a team, and it's actually become almost a vital part of our everyday existence as far as laying out streets and sewage and water lines and everything that we do. So it's a vital part of our overall operation. And so therefore, whereas geographic information systems technology is that it combines information with maps to visualize the landscape in customized ways to create a powerful and efficient tool for mapping and analyzing objects and events. Whereas Midwest City understands that GIS is critical to maintain a balance between the city's natural resources, continued economic prosperity, and the general health and well-being of the citizens. And whereas extensive efforts are underway in various public and private agencies and organizations throughout the United States and the world to develop and incorporate and utilize GIS technology. And whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training among various groups to most opportunity and wisely utilize this rapidly developing technology that is used throughout the world to solve problems in areas as environmental protection, healthcare, land use, business efficiency, education, and social inadequacies. And therefore, I, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim April 11th as GIS Day. One more.
Thank you very much.
Got through that one? Now here's my ask, Jarman Middle School academic team to come forward please, and their principal and vice, and their teacher. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Jarman Junior High, or Jarman Middle School, pardon me. It was junior high when I went there. Academic team, and they've done something pretty special this last month, and we're going to recognize them tonight. By the way, I went to Jarman. It's a good school, isn't it? You're supposed to be. Yes. Whereas Midwest City Jarman Middle School academic team is a member of the Oklahoma Junior Academic Bowl Association and an organization that gives Oklahoma fifth through ninth graders an opportunity to participate in the Academic Bowl Playoff Series of District, Regional, and State tournaments. And whereas the academic team is a group of students who represent the school in challenging other schools in game of trivia and must possess a wide range of knowledge regarding a variety of topics including presidents, history, math, chemistry, geography, mythology, art, music, and according to Ms. Sherri Bruce, the academic team supervisor and sponsor a wide variety of other information. Whereas these students are also community-minded, well-rounded people participating in sports, music, and community service projects such as Midwest City Adopt a Street. And whereas the academic team won first place in Region B tournament, and we congratulate the 2016, 2017, seventh and eighth grade members who competed in either district or regional competition this school year. And we will advance to the state tournament. And whereas we wish the academic team good luck as they defend their two-time championship title at the Middel Brain Bowl. Therefore, I, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim April 12th as Jarman Academic Team Day. Congratulations. Get it around. We've got to do this photo op thing.
I will just have one side. Kalasia, I'm going to stand behind you because I don't have my shirt on. I'm going to act like I do. I'm going to thank you till I make it.
Okay, act like you like each other.
I love these people. Thank you. One more.
Again, thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you.
Good job. You're taller than I am. Everybody's taller than you.
Thank you. And happy anniversary to the mayor.
Oh. Just two more. Todd and Jen, you want to come up? These guys are 911 dispatchers. When you call 911, these are the folks that are the calming voice. They tell you to take a breath and calm down, tell me where you're at and what's going on. But more importantly, they're the lifeline between the firemen and the police officers to keep them updated as to what's going on and also to keep you calm in an emergency. The job they do are phenomenal. And after 31 years of being a cop, I've talked to both of these guys on numerous occasions, and they kept me calm. Okay, Lieutenant, calm down. Tell me what's going on. So it's kind of a special deal that we learned today. Whereas emergencies can occur anytime and place, and 911 is the nationally recognized number to call an emergency to receive immediate help from police, fire, emergency medical services, and other appropriate agencies, response, and titles. And whereas as a 911 telecommunicator is the voice of hope, assurance, and that help is on the way, and in some cases, saving grace for a situation such as when our own Becky Bruce calmly and professionally walked a panicked mother through CPR steps to save her 10-month-old daughter. And whereas these everyday superheroes are also the vital link between the caller and responding emergency entity giving life-saving information and directions. Whereas in 1994, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week was formally recognized nationally and celebrated each year during the second full week of April to coincide with the National 911 Education Month. And the city of Midwest City wishes to participate on behalf of our own telecommunicators. So therefore, I, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through the 15th as 911 Telecommunications Week. Thank you for all you did. You guys are great. Okay, one more. Whereas in 1872... I didn't know you were that old. Dang. God, you age well, dude. I'm sorry. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees. And whereas this holiday is called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed nationwide and throughout the world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil, and by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, food, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our community increase property values...
And it's actually become almost a vital part of our everyday existence as far as laying out streets and sewage and water plant, water lines and everything that we do. So it's a vital part of our overall operation. And so therefore, whereas geographical or geographic information systems technology is that combines information with maps to visualize the landscape in customized ways to create a powerful and efficient tool for mapping and analyzing objects and events. Whereas Midwest City understands that GIS is a critical, is critical to maintain a balance between the city's natural resources, continued economic prosperity, and the general health and well-being of the citizens. And whereas extensive efforts are underway in various public and private agencies and organizations throughout the United States and the world to develop and incorporate and utilize GIS technology. And whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training among various groups to most oppor- most opportunity and wisely utilize this rapidly developing technology that is used throughout the world to solve problems in areas as environmental protection, healthcare, land use, business efficiency, education, and social inadequacies. And therefore, I, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim April 11th as GIS Day. (applause) One more.
Thank you very much.
Got through that one? Now here to the special. May I ask Jarman Middle School Academic Team to come forward please, and their principal and vice, and their teacher. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Jarman Junior High, or Jarman Middle School, pardon me. It was junior high when I went there. Academic Team. And they've done something pretty special this last month, and we're going to recognize them tonight. By the way, I went to Jarman. It's a good school, isn't it? You're supposed to be. Whereas Midwest City Jarman Middle School Academic Team is a member of the Oklahoma Junior Academic Bowl Association and an organization that gives Oklahoma fifth through ninth graders an opportunity to participate in the Academic Bowl Playoff Series of District Regional and State Terminals. And whereas the Academic Team is a group of students who represent the school in challenging other schools in game of trivia and must possess a wide range of knowledge regarding a variety of topics including presidents, history, math, chemistry, geography, mythology, art, music, and according to Ms. Sherry Bruce, the Academic Team Supervisor and Sponsor of a wide variety of other information. Whereas these students are also community-minded, well-rounded people participating in sports, music, and community service projects such as Midwest City Adopt a Street. And whereas the Academic Team won first place in Region B Tournament, and we congratulate the 2016, 2017, seventh and eighth grade members who competed in either district or regional competition this school year, and we will advance to the state tournament. And whereas we wish the Academic Team good luck as they defend their two-time championship title at the Middel Brain Bowl. Therefore, I, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim April 12th as Jarman Academic Team Day. Congratulations. Get it around. We got to do this photo op thing.
I will just have one side. Okay. Kalasia, I'm going to stand behind you because I don't have my shirt on. I'm going to act like I do. I'm going to thank you till I make it.
Okay. Act like you like each other.
I love these people. Thank you. One more.
Again, thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you.
Good job. You're taller than I am. Everybody's taller than you.
Thank you. And happy anniversary to the mayor.
Oh. Just two more. Todd and Jen, you want to come up? These guys are 911 dispatchers. When you call 911, these are the folks that are the calming voice to tell you to take a breath and calm down, tell me where you're at and what's going on. But more importantly, they're the lifeline between the firemen and the police officers to keep them updated as to what's going on and also to keep you calm in an emergency. The job they do are phenomenal. And after 31 years of being a cop, I've talked to both of these guys on numerous occasions, and they kept me calm. Okay Lieutenant, calm down, tell me what's going on. So it's kind of a special deal that we learned today. Whereas emergencies can occur anytime and place, and 911 is the nationally recognized number to call an emergency to receive immediate help from police, fire, emergency medical services, and other appropriate agencies, response, and titles. And whereas nine, as a 911 tele- telecommunications is the voice of hope, assurance, and that help is on the way, and in some cases saving, the saving grace for a situation such as when our own Becky Bruce calmly and professionally walked a panicked mother through CPR steps to save her 10-month-old daughter. And whereas these everyday superheroes are also the vital link between the caller and responding emergency entity giving life-saving information and directions. Whereas in 1994, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week was formally recognized nationally and celebrated each year during the second full week of April to coincide with the National 911 Education Month, and the city of Midwest City wishes to participate on behalf of our own telecommunicators. So therefore, I, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through the 15th as 911 Telecommunications Week. Thank you for all you. You guys are great. Okay, one more. Whereas in 1872, I didn't know you were that old. Dang. Damn, you age well, dude. I'm sorry. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees. And whereas this holiday is called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed nationwide and throughout the world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil, and by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, food, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our community increase property values, enhance economic vitality of businesses, and beautify our community by providing a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas this year's theme, "We All Need Trees," and we in Midwest City agree that we have been recognized as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation, we desire to continue tree planting. Therefore, I, Matt Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim April 16th through the 22nd as Arbor Week. He's too tall to hug. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you guys for being here very much. Now we move into the consent agenda of our, our consent agenda of our program this evening. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the council and members by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item does not meet with the approval of all council members or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, that item will be removed and heard in regular order.
We would request that item C4 be removed from the consent.
Move that all other items on the consent agenda be approved.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Go on to the discussion items of this agenda.
First discussion item is discussion consideration of amending Chapter 28, Article 4, Section 28-57B, definition of petty, petty larceny by increasing the amount from $500 to $1,000 and providing for repealer and severability. Oklahoma law has long defined petty larceny as taking property of $500 or less. That amount constitutes a misdemeanor and can be prosecuted in municipal court. Recently, the statute was amended, changing the definition to an amount of $1,000 or less. Since that is also a misdemeanor, we can prosecute those additional offenses. The same amendment was made to include jurisdictions for false or bogus checks. So the proposed ordinance accomplishes the increase.
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Second item, discussion consideration of passing and approving an ordinance amending Chapter 37 Streets and Sidewalks of the Midwest City Code by amending Article 2, Public Courtesy Benches, Section 37-16, compliance in Section 37-17, defined and providing for repealer and severability. This ordinance amendment will allow the city to construct public courtesy shelters at bus stops in the public right-of-way. Under the existing ordinance language, construction of a public courtesy shelter is in the right-of-way would be prohibited. It will be our intention to, to construct 10 public courtesy shelters at existing bus stop, state, bus stops along Route 15 once the ordinance has been amended. Staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Next item is discussion consideration of one, approving and entering into an economic development agreement with Sooner Investment, Inc., and the city of Midwest City in the approximate amount of $3,800,000 and other good and valuable consideration to establish the terms and conditions under which the parties will participate in the purchase and redevelopment of approximately 14 and a half acres located on the north side of Southeast 15th Street between South Sooner Road and Buena Vista Avenue. And two, and authorizing the chairman and/or the general manager, administrator into, to enter into such other agreements and execute such other documents as may be necessary or appropriate to affect the provisions of the agreement. We have provided to you a draft agreement for this item and then also for the, for the next item dealing with the warrant agree, agreement. The agreement pretty much follows in line with the, with the requirements established under the Tax Increment Finance District Number Two, which was approved by the, by the council at the last meeting. So these were provided to you rather late, so action is at your discretion.
Chair would entertain a motion. Chair would entertain a motion. There's no action taken on this, on these two.
Well, in talking with, with the chamber, they weren't really able to give me a, a firm schedule, dates, so I would prefer to just see you all take no action, and then we will schedule a special meeting next week sometime when we're, when we got it all lined out.
Okay, no action is going to be taken on discussion items three and four. We'll bring that back to the council at a later date. Item five.
This is discussion consideration of appointing a replacement for Mr. Glenn Goldschlager for a three-year term to the Midwest City Tree Board.
Pat Burns' wife. Mrs. Burns. Mrs. Burns. So Lyndon Burns.
I would second that if she's able to accept your nomination, which I believe she is.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? We now move into the new business public discussion of our agenda. Is anybody in the audience care to wish, or wish to bring anything before the council? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
You'd go into executive session.
I need to read the item. Discussion consideration of one, entering into executive session is allowed under 25 OS. Section 307b for to discuss Lori Henry, Workers Compensation Case Number MWC 14-16681, into an open session authorizing the city manager, manager to take action as appropriate based on the discussion in executive session.
Move to go to executive session.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be in the executive session, we'll be back.
How's your man?
He's here.
I'm sorry. You guys understand, you're a team.
Okay, one more. Okay, one more. Whereas in 1872, I didn't know you were that old. Dang. Damn, you age well, dude. I'm sorry. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees. And whereas this holiday is called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed nationwide and throughout the world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil, and by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, food, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our community increase property values, enhance economic vitality of businesses, and beautify our community by providing a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas this year's theme, "We All Need Trees," and we in Midwest City agree that we have been recognized as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation, we desire to continue tree planting. Therefore, I, Matt Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim April 16th through the 22nd as Arbor Week. He's too tall to hug. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you guys for being here very much. Now we move into the consent agenda of our, our consent agenda of our program this evening. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the council and members by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item does not meet with the approval of all council members or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, that item will be removed and heard in regular order.
We would request that item C4 be removed from the consent.
Move that all other items on the consent agenda be approved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Second item, discussion consideration of passing and approving an ordinance amending Chapter 37 Streets and Sidewalks of the Midwest City Code by amending Article 2, Public Courtesy Benches, Section 37-16, compliance in Section 37-17, defined and providing for repealer and severability. This ordinance amendment will allow the city to construct public courtesy shelters at bus stops in the public right-of-way. Under the existing ordinance language, construction of a public courtesy shelter is in the right-of-way would be prohibited. It will be our intention to, to construct 10 public courtesy shelters at existing bus stop, state, bus stops along Route 15 once the ordinance has been amended. Staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Next item is discussion consideration of one, approving and entering into an economic development agreement with Sooner Investment, Inc., and the city of Midwest City in the approximate amount of $3,800,000 and other good and valuable consideration to establish the terms and conditions under which the parties will participate in the purchase and redevelopment of approximately 14 and a half acres located on the north side of Southeast 15th Street between South Sooner Road and Buena Vista Avenue. And two, and authorizing the chairman and/or the general manager, administrator into, to enter into such other agreements and execute such other documents as may be necessary or appropriate to affect the provisions of the agreement. We have provided to you a draft agreement for this item and then also for the, for the next item dealing with the warrant agree, agreement. The agreement pretty much follows in line with the, with the requirements established under the Tax Increment Finance District Number Two, which was approved by the, by the council at the last meeting. So these were provided to you rather late, so action is at your discretion.
Chair would entertain a motion. Chair would entertain a motion. There's no action taken on this, on these two.
Well, in talking with, with the chamber, they weren't really able to give me a, a firm schedule, dates, so I would prefer to just see you all take no action, and then we will schedule a special meeting next week sometime when we're, when we got it all lined out.
Okay, no action is going to be taken on discussion items three and four. We'll bring that back to the council at a later date. Item five.
This is discussion consideration of appointing a replacement for Mr. Glenn Goldschlager for a three-year term to the Midwest City Tree Board.
Pat Burns' wife.
Yeah, I just explained her first name.
Mrs. Burns.
Sorry. Sorry.
So Lyndon Burns.
I would second that if she's able to accept your nomination, which I believe she is.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? We now move into the new business public discussion of our agenda. Is anybody in the audience care to wish, or wish to bring anything before the council? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
You'd go into executive session.
I need to read the item. Discussion consideration of one, entering into executive session is allowed under 25 OS. Section 307b for to discuss Lori Henry, Workers Compensation Case Number MWC 14-16681, into an open session authorizing the city manager, manager to take action as appropriate based on the discussion in executive session.
Move to go to executive session.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be in the executive session, we'll be back.
How's your man?
He's here.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
You guys understand, you're a team.
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 Okay, all calls back in, uh, back in session, um, and the chair would entertain a motion. We had a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Any further discussion or anything to bring before the council? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. Move on to the, uh, Midwest City Municipal Authority and call this meeting to order, we have one discussion item.
This is discussion consideration approving the minutes of the staff briefing and regular meeting of March twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? We move into the new business public discussion of this agenda, anybody have any but thing to bring before the council and the municipal authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. Call to order the, uh, Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We do have a consent agenda, these items are placed on consent agenda so the trustees by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item, proposed item does not meet with the approval of all the trustees or the members of the audience wish to discuss an item, that item be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve, consent agenda.
I have a motion and.
Second.
I have a second, I have a motion and a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Move into discussion items of this agenda.
First item is discussion consideration of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers and make cha- make changes in the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. No action is necessary on this item.
Move to the, uh, second i- discussion item.
Second item is discussion consideration of one approving and entering into an economic development agreement with Sooner Investment Group, Inc. and the city of Midwest City and the approximate amount of three point eight million dollars and other good and valuable consideration to establish the terms and conditions under which the parties will participate in the purchase and redevelopment of approximately fourteen and a half acres located on the north side of Southeast Fifteenth Street between South Sooner Road and Buena Vista Avenue. And two, uh, and authorizing the chairman and or the general manager slash administrator to enter into such agreements and execute such documents as may be necessary or appropriate to effect the provisions of the agreement.
These are the same two items that was on the council agenda, the chair would entertain a motion.
I think we're gonna not, just simply not take any action on the items.
No action taken on items two and three of the discussion items, moving into item number four.
This is a discussion consideration of authorizing up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars use of discretionary funds towards relocating and burying over- overhead utility lines on Southeast Fifteenth Street from South Sooner to Buena Vista as part of the Sooner Road Shopping Complex Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yes, sir.
No.
No, we don't have to do it, but it certainly beautifies the area when we do that.
Yeah, I, I, I know it's a lot of money, but boy, anytime I go to any progressive, go to, go to Frisco, Texas, go to Richardson, Texas, go to anywhere, you don't see, you, you don't even see a utility line. And, and I, I, I hate it that in Oklahoma, we always have to take this poor me attitude. I, I, I like to see some first-class stuff in our city. I mean, I, and I know it's expensive, but, but we're getting ready to do this, this multi-million dollar thing over there, I, I'd just like to see it finished out.
Well, also, also, I think the, the other factor that weighs on my mind, I agree with you all about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money for us to be spending on this. And that's why I asked the question I asked upstairs earlier about, you know, what's our offset for moving the lines back and so forth. However, the, the thought that does concern me is the continuity of service for those businesses, the theater, the retail, et cetera. I mean, you know, we get bad weather in Oklahoma, you know, it takes power lines down. If we have disruption of business services to those places, you know, one of the main place that people will go when there's bad weather out is they will manage to go out to eat and they will manage to go see a movie. Um, and if we're shut down, we're not making money during that time period. I don't think.
I have a problem with the office.
I don't think it's look pretty, I think it's more of a, a, a safety, uh, mechanism for what we're gonna invest in and also for the residents of Midwest City if we had bad weather. And the lights and power went off, possibility as, uh, councilwoman, uh, Susan said that, you know, they'll have a place to go. So I, I think it's, even though it is a lot of money, we have to invest in the city. We, we have to. That's what we.
Mr. Reed, I'm not, I'm not certain that we're holding open any positions right now, uh, or do we plan to? We are moving forward, uh, with, with, with hiring as we, as we need to. So although I appreciate your consideration on that and I, I, I share those sentiments as well, but I don't think we're doing that. And is there any further discussion?
I would, I would, I would confirm that.
Actually, it, it all depends on whether the primary goes down or not, because all mine on railroad are, uh, underground. Um, and as long as the primary stays up, we're good. And on south side of the street, uh, or the north side of the street, all of those are above ground and they lose power every time the wind blows. So, uh, it does make a difference and, and also the optics of it. You drive down, uh, and I've, I've taken staff on several drive-throughs where I've pointed out where the, uh, the utilities have not been maintained. They're ugly, especially the, the old, uh, outside telephone, uh, two and four and five hundred pair of cables hanging. They're not being maintained by A and T and T and it, it just has an ugly optic to it. Uh, again, there's a safety issue that we, we, we have to consider, we need to consider. Uh, I, I agree, it's a lot of money, but there are other things other than beautification that we have to take in consideration under, under this. And, and, and as we go through other projects, this needs to be a consideration, especially in P U Ds as, uh, as they come forward. We need to start taking this into consideration.
I'm sorry, between, I would say around, between three and four percent. I would say somewhere between.
I'm sorry, between, I would say around, between three and four percent. Seven, eight hundred thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, between, I would say around, between three and four percent.
Seven, eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, any further discussion? The chair would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move into the public business, public discussion of this agenda, anyone have anything to bring before the, uh, hospital authority? We do have an executive session.
This would be discussion consideration of one entering into executive session as allowed under twenty-five O S. Section three oh seven C ten to confer on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing or creation of a proposal to entice a business to remain or to loc- locate in the city.
Move to go to executive session.
I have a motion. I have a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in executive session.
I think.
I appreciate it. That's true. How much important is your your family separate? Your city separate and the place is independent, you're proud. And I think you're thinking based on the current, they've done. It's better to get more money. They work for the hospital, they're still up there. They put in that one, they're working there. They will get the best of them, they get that hospital. Right? Yeah, we have a hospital. Right, they have, they have. But we've never got kids. Well. The hospital. We will be able to. For uh, you see, they have a job there. So. It's. Our saving, we've been talking about inside. And uh it's just built to buy any parts or things, it's just. Yeah, and maybe we should be, that's a short version, we are paying. To talk to you.
Okay, we're back in session and the chair would entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approved items discussed in executive session and allow city manager and city staff to take appropriate actions as needed.
Second.
Have motion and second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any extension, any further discussion, we're hereby adjourned. Move into the Midwest City Economic Development Commission Agenda and call this meeting to order. We do have consent agenda, these items are placed on consent agendas so the commissioners by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If anyone, if any item proposed does not meet the approval of all commissioners or members of the audience which discuss an item, that item will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any extensions? We can move into the new business public discussion. Any discussion, hearing none, we're hereby adjourned. Thank you ladies and gentlemen.